This is the Town of Adams Board of Selecting meeting, Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, is now in session, as we did last meeting, where we started off with a statement about the structure of our meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. As a reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting, while in progress, would do so by tuning into Channel 1303. Thank you to the Berkshire Community Television for providing that service, or by calling And despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide a real-time access or recording of this meeting, will be posted on nbctc.org as soon as they are able. So we appreciate that. And with that, if you could all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. That brings us to the approval of minutes. And just a reminder to board members, all items that we vote on will be a roll call vote. So in front of us, we do have the Wednesday, March 11th, 2020 minutes. It is my understanding that I think all members can vote on them, because I see that all members did attend.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the March 11th, 2020 meeting notes as submitted.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Jim. Any discussion? Wait and see if Rick or John have any discussion. Nope. All right, hearing none. All in favor, Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
I would say abstain.
You're going to abstain? Okay. And John?
You might have to unmute.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Are you, is your voting in favor?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. So that is unanimous. Sorry about the cumbersome nature of the voting. That brings us to public comment. I do see that there are a number of people on this call. Is there anybody who is on the phone who wishes to address the board with a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? I think all of the people on the phone are here for the items. Hearing none, we'll go ahead on to new business. Under new business, the first item is a COVID-19 update, and I will turn it to our town administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As everyone knows, this is still an evolving situation, and we adapt as we can, day by day, as a community. I give everyone a little update in terms of kind of where we are at the state level and where we are with the local operations. The Governor spoke yesterday and extended essential business services, essential services operation only through May 4th. The standing order continues that there be no large groups, more than 10, congregating. For those of you who are wondering if your business is listed as an essential service, the dph, the mass.gov/dph website is your best resource. On there is a comprehensive list, broken up by topic and category, that you can go on and review, along with some frequently asked questions. There's also a phone number available on there to call. Although some of the power is vested with the municipality, but for the most part, this is a state order. This is a state decision, so we don't necessarily have a lot of ability to dictate what is and what isn't an essential business. So we encourage everyone to go there first, and then if you have any questions from there, you can call, and we'll do our best to walk you through it. Should you be a business owner, and you determine that your business should be listed as an essential service, there is a protocol or a provision available on that same website that walks you through it to go through with the Department of Public Health. A word of caution, however, this order for essential services only through May 4th, as inconvenient as it can be, I'd like to remind everyone that it is in the interest of public health and public safety. Enforcement can be enforced by the Adams Police Department, the Massachusetts State Police, Board of Health, and our Inspection Services Bureau. The Inspection Services Bureau and Police Department are still working regular hours, and we please encourage you to comply. They will be out and about, visiting businesses and observing to make sure that we have full compliance with this order. It is in the interest of public safety and public health. We closed the parks last Friday. The reason why we did that is we were a little later than City of North Adams in order to do that. However, we chose to do it last Friday after we received some feedback from our constituency, as well as the Police Department, that there were large groups congregating in our open spaces and parks. So we did close our parks. The playground equipment is not being sanitized. So that is one reason. If you choose to use it, you do so at your own risk, and we encourage you not to. If you wish to go by yourself or with a small group of people and utilize the parks in a passive manner, meaning walking, or running, or jogging, you're welcome to do so. But please keep in mind as well that the Police Department and Inspection Services will be out and about keeping an eye on that. And again, that's for public health and public safety. There has been a rapid development this week with legislation coming from the state and from the federal government, and frankly, it's a lot to digest. There's some labor law provisions that have come down that we're trying to address here on the municipality side. We expect legislation by the end of this week that will permit municipalities to address our town meeting, our budget, and other municipal relief provisions that will allow us to continue beyond our charter mandated dates for town meeting. We'll keep everyone in the loop about that. And we also anticipate additional guidance soon regarding self-service restaurants, such as convenience stores, et cetera, as well as a development that may be coming regarding restaurant takeout of alcoholic beverages, but we'll see. In terms of actual COVID-19 presence itself, the total confirmed cases as of today at 3:00 p.m. statewide is 7,738. There were 4,803 new tests conducted this last 24-hour period, for a total of 51,738 tests statewide. There were 7,738 total cases, as I said, and there are now state Commonwealth-wide 122 deaths. For Town of Adams, we have six confirmed cases. We had been a high of eight, however, two have successfully quarantined and come off that list. So there are now a total of six cases here in the Town of Adams. One of those is a member of our DPW department. Despite the best protocols that we could take, we did have a positive test within DPW. We took immediate action and reduced down even beyond what we had been operating, is two six-man crews. We worked with our public health nurse, as well as a state epidemiologist, and we put a protocol in place to protect the safety of the balance of our employees. So they are not quarantined. The nature of the contact was not required. However, we're using only a three-person crew, working two and a half days, cycling everybody through, once again approved by our public health nurse and state epidemiologist. And why are we doing that? Is that DPW is essential. We have essential infrastructure that needs day-to-day maintaining. So we're doing our best in order to get through that. That's about all I have for COVID-19, but I just implore upon everyone, this is a rapidly changing and evolving situation. It's probably one of the most dynamic situations I've ever had to address, and we do our best to continue to provide services, protect the public health, protect public safety as we go along. That's all I have.
Any questions for Jay?
I would just like to make a comment, if you don't mind. Over the years, I've put together quotes that have brought me through difficult times, and I went through my booklet, and I found one that I felt was something that I'd like to read. It sure, it was done by a woman named Pema Shodran. She's an American Tibetan Buddhist and an ordained nun, and she's still living, and she's in her 80s. And she once said, "Nothing ever goes away until it teaches us what we need to know." And we have to be our own teachers at this time. Once again, the numbers will elevate, and you shouldn't be alarmed with all the testing going on, as most of you have probably been following. The numbers are definitely going to climb. So don't make that so alarming, because it is going to happen. And also, they're finding that this is spreading because you don't know you have it. And so that makes it more important that you stay away from people, and even though you're feeling good, you might be a carrier. And so that's all I'd like to say. And once again, we know what we need to do, so let's all work as a community and do it, and it will, the outcome will be much better, and I hopefully, much quicker.
Thank you, Joe. Jim, anything for?
I just want to thank everybody that's working diligently with this and bringing information forward to us. It's valuable, and the people of this community really have to listen to these people. They're talking facts, they're not talking fiction. Listen and abide, and things are going to work out.
Rick, do you have any questions for Jay?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. John, any questions?
I'm outside, thank you.
Okay. All right, then if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the second item under new business, which is the change of manager application for Pine Brook Pub located at 128 Columbia Street. This is changing the manager from Mitchell to Spain to Tammy or Trent Schaefer. The paperwork is in your packet. For those of you who are following at home, it is on the screen. Legal counsel has reviewed the change of manager application and has no issues with the application as presented in front of all of us this evening.
What, a motion?
I would love a motion.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we change the manager from Mitchell to Spain to Tammy or Trent Schaefer for Pine Brook Pub doing business at 128 Columbia Street, Adams, Massachusetts.
Okay. And I believe that the paperwork, sorry, I stated wrong, because I read it from the agenda, but the paperwork does state that the manager will be Trent Schaefer.
Okay, so Trent Schaefer as manager?
Yes. Appreciate that. So Jim, with the amended motion?
I'll second that.
A second by Joe. Any questions or discussion? It's quiet in the room. Rick, do you have any questions?
Could you not?
Okay. John, anything?
I'll start.
All right. Been hearing no questions or discussion. I'll call for a vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And a yes from me, and that makes that unanimous. So thank you very much. The next item on our agenda, I will try to pull that up, is a request from the town clerk to reschedule the annual town meeting to Monday, June 1st, 2020. I believe that our town clerk is on the phone. Is that correct? Haley, are you with us? If you are, you might still be muted. Haley, are you there? Haley?
Hello?
Ah, there you are. I just had to find the right phone, sorry.
Nope, that's, can you hear me now?
We can. We can definitely hear you. So if you wanted to walk us through the request?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
The letter that I wrote to you, I'll just read that. In response to the state emergency and concerns about the COVID-19 and implications on the election administration, the Governor signed a law authorizing the Board of Selectmen to vote to postpone a local election. I had included a copy of that with your letter. And at this time, I would ask that the Board reschedule the annual town election from Monday, May 4th, to Monday, June 1st. I did speak with the Cheshire Town Clerk, Chris Emerson, and I do believe that last night, the Town of Cheshire also voted to change their election from the May 4th, 2020 to June 1st, 2020. If the Board does decide to change the date, my office will certainly work on getting that information out into the public, and while alternatives, voters will have to choose if they do decide that they do not want to come and vote in person. So at this time, I would ask that the Board make a motion that, in accordance with Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, the Town of Adams postponed the town election scheduled for May 4th, 2020, to June 1st, 2020. Thank you.
Okay.
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to reschedule the annual town election through Act 45, 2020, which was put down by the Governor to change the date from May 4th, 2020, to Monday, June 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Joe, for the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Jim. Any discussion or any questions for the town clerk?
I just have one question.
Sure, Jim.
I think I know, I know I know the answer, but that, all nominations right now, all paperwork that's been handed in, there, nobody else can run for an office, correct? It's all froze.
That is correct.
Okay.
Rick, do you have any questions for the town clerk?
Just one.
Sure.
If I remember right, there was only one office that was a contest, so to speak. Is that correct?
No, we have two offices that will be a contest.
Okay, it was school board member, and what was the other?
Library trustee.
Library trustee, okay. I was just going to say that the, with the school board member, if Cheshire has postponed ours, it wouldn't do, there's no emergency to get ours done on time, and definitely agree with postponing it.
Thank you.
John, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. And Haley, I just, just a comment. I appreciate the work coordinating with the Town of Cheshire to make sure that we're trying to move it to the same date. I know that's really important for the school elections, at least according to the district agreement. So I appreciate the legwork that you've done on that with Chris Emerson in Cheshire. So if there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And it is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Haley, thank you very much for joining us. You can mute yourself if you'd like, or, and you can hang on, however you'd like to go on with the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the next item. It's an application for permit to place a sign on Public Way. The application was put forward by Jenny Duval for the Vote for Susan project. If you give me a moment, I'll bring that paperwork up as well. So you have in your packets the application itself and a copy of the sign. So this is a program that has run one or two years, but for a couple of election cycles, I believe, and they are looking to work with the town as to placement of the signs. It looks like it's an 18-by-24-inch sign, a minimum of 10 signs on town property. The signs do say, "Susan B. Couldn't, But You Can," and encourages people to vote. The dates that they are looking to put the signage out would be May 23rd to June 2nd, 2020, recognizing that June 2nd is the day after the now moved town election, but that just gives the group time to pick up the signs the day after. Is there anything on your end, Jay?
Nope, we're good.
Okay.
Consistent with Jenny's request, as always, dates have been amended, consistent with the move date that the Board just approved. We're in good shape.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we allowed Virginia Duval to put signs on town property, "Susan B. Couldn't, But You Can," from May 23rd to June 2nd, 2020.
Thank you. I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Joe. Any discussion?
Second by Joe. Any discussion?
Oh, there's an echo.
Any discussion?
And, okay. Wow. It's a little disturbing to hear my voice back multiple times.
Got crackers. Technology.
Okay, so no discussion in the room. Rick, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. John?
No.
Okay. I apologize for whatever that noise was and for the distraction that followed after. So hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christine is a yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to the Police Chief Screening Committee. Last week, I had mentioned to the Board that we had a member of the screening committee step down for personal reasons, and since then, so I put it on the agenda first to discuss. We did have...
I put it on the agenda first to discuss.
I don't know who you are at home, but I'm going to keep muting you.
I'm going to keep muting.
Is your computer muted?
Mine is.
Okay.
Yep.
And mine went too, Josh.
Yep. Okay, so I think we're good. So we did talk about how the person had to step down from the screening committee. Since then, I know of one person that's expressed interest in serving on the committee, but wanted to hear from the Board if anybody else had.
I was going to ask someone, but at the time, they were sick, so I didn't ask them. But I'm fine with, well, I'd like to hear who it is, of course.
Certainly. So Tim Burdick, who's a Chair of the Finance Committee, is an employee over Adams Community Bank and lifelong resident of the Town of Adams, has expressed interest in serving. I think that's a nice balance to the committee representing the local business community. So I, that's a name for discussion. But Rick, did you have any input on that?
I mean, that candidate is fine with me. I've had nobody approach me saying they're interested.
Okay. John?
I'm good with the candidate that was just expressed.
So if, if there's no other discussion, we can go ahead and take a vote on that, but I didn't know, Jay, if there was an update that we had at this point?
Sure, I can tell everybody that the window for applications closed on Friday, I believe that was the 27th. So they closed on Friday, and I did a quick count, I believe we have 14 applications. I have not had a chance to look beyond that, but we do have 14. So our next steps was, now that we have a full search committee back up, we'll, as soon as we can catch our breath, take a moment here, we'll, we'll take a look at the applications, and we'll get them to the search committee and start taking, you know, our first steps. I would like to think, perhaps aspirationally, that we can still do this, to get a new chief on board for July 1st. However, I, you know, do have assurances from our, our present team at the Police Department that, you know, we, we will continue, you know, with proper leadership and fashion as, as needed. We'll keep our fingers crossed for, you know, July 1st, but at this point, all normal, all normal municipal operations and timelines are kind of thrown out the window. So that's where we are with that.
Okay. Oh, I thought you had your hand raised.
If, if you'd like, I'd like to make a motion to assign Tim Burdick as a member of the Police Chief Screening Committee.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion in the room? Rick? Any questions or discussion?
No.
No? John?
No. I'll start.
Okay. I'll call for a vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Christine is a yes, so that is also unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to department reports. Town Administrator, is there anything?
Sure, just a reminder for everybody that all town offices remain open Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Staff is here. Unfortunately, we don't seem to be getting that word out to a few people. We've, we've had some folks that have called up that don't understand, the building may be close to the public, but we are here. There was quite a brisk business for the drop box in front of the building, so just as a, as a courtesy reminder to our folks, feel free to call the main number to the, to Town Hall, use the voicemail system, use email if you go online to the webpage. The town clerk's office manages that. Everyone's email is on there. You can email the staff, email the department, check voicemail. The Community Development Department, with the exception of maybe the department head periodically, is working remotely from home, but we continue to move ahead with as many projects as we can, all of our construction projects, all of our community development projects. We're doing our best to keep everything on the stove and moving forward. The Inspection Services Bureau, particularly the Building Commissioner, Mr. Garner, is still going out and processing building permits, et cetera, so we're still moving forward with, with all of that, so don't hesitate. Adams is still, we're doing our best to continue to work. We're still open for business. So please continue to send all of that information in, and please be patient, but our staff will get back to you. We're also trying to pay attention to all of the legislation that comes down. There's, I want folks to understand, we're getting barraged with legislation that deals with municipal government, which is what my primary focus is, in order to try to make sure that all of our municipal functions and operations are able to continue forward without being able to meet in the same room and remotely, and timelines, et cetera. And at the same time, we're getting legislation coming down for our private sector. We encourage everyone at home in the private sector, do your best to research this through sites such as One Berkshire, Small Business Administration, Congressman Neal's office, et cetera. There's a lot of resources out there. And I would anticipate, based on a conversation, in fact, Joe and I talked about it today, we would anticipate listening to Congressman Neal that there's going to be additional legislation passed as well. I'd also like to tell everybody, too, that we're doing our best to pay attention to this legislation, so that the town can take advantage, perhaps, of whatever stimulus funding may come down for certain projects down the road as well. So we're doing our best to manage day by day, and as well as keeping our eye on the prize for, for the end of the tunnel as well. As my time permits, I continue to participate with our Regional Emergency Command Center up in North Adams. We have daily phone conferences, not only with the command staff there, but also with all of our other communities, including North Adams, that are within the Northern Berkshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee. That is a daily, we get daily updates from Berkshire Medical Center. So as I have said all along, in the last few, three weeks, it feels like, although it feels like a year at this point, we are not alone, and we're in touch with all of our neighboring communities as well. So that's been essentially what I've been working on as we go. That's about all I've got.
Any questions for Jay?
I just have one quick question. I noticed at Memorial I notice at Memorial School, I see a lot of work going on there. Could you tell me the scope of the work? And that was money that we got through a community block grant.
Yes.
And I was wondering, what is being done in there at the present time?
That's the heating and air conditioning, the HVAC project?
Right. But to what extent, would, how far along are we going?
I haven't, I haven't been able to get an update on that. I know they're still working. I asked the other day if they're still working out of concerns for, you know, safety distancing, et cetera, but construction is still considered essential. The building inspector goes over periodically, they're spread out through the building. I believe, the last time I checked, which a couple of days ago, I want to say they've been running gas lines, electric work is done, but I don't think they've installed the units yet.
Okay.
But that is on course, on track, as scheduled at this time.
Right, because we needed to disseminate that money and spend it because it was coming toward the end of it. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's all I have, and just one other quick thing. You kind of alluded to it, but I think it's time that we step back and look at the projects that we have going on, and to look deeply into the future of them, and to see which ones we should start prioritizing. Because I felt in the past that we'd get so many things going at one time, and I made the analogy, it's like putting your shoe on, but we never tie it, we never, you know, come to a good ending to it. So I just hope that maybe we take a pause and look at our projects and see how they're progressing, and see which ones, if we have to pick and choose, would be more advantageous to the betterment of our community.
It's an excellent point, Joe, and I like your analogy, because that's exactly how I feel. When I, even though we've, we're a year out now since I first started, most of the projects that were in the pipeline at that time are now only coming into construction time. And part of my frustration is, is that we have so many projects open, we have at least probably six, seven, in different stages, but we have limited staff that can manage them. Unfortunately, we're locked into those projects. We've earned the funding, we have to commit. I can tell you, going forward, I never want to be in the position again of having that number of major projects open. So I can tell you that we are not looking beyond what we already have, do them well, do them as efficient as we can, pause, and then go forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions that I've been asked. I don't know, Jay, you're going to have the answers either.
I tried.
The Rail Trail Project, how far are we from getting that coming to Adams?
Assuming they're on the same path, the same timeline that they had been back in early winter, when myself and Town Administrator St. John went to a meeting, I don't think we're going to see them up here until probably August. But that's dynamic as well, and if the weather holds out, they could expedite the work on the southern end of the trail and move up here earlier. We're in touch with Mass DOT, District 1, down in Lenox, and they're keeping us informed, not on a regular basis, but periodically. And I would assure, I would hope that if they're going to mobilize up here, we'll be told. Particularly right now, where it's important to have a recreational resource and asset like the Rail Trail, where you can not be on top of somebody, be six feet apart, and actually be outside, not cooped up in your house. So maybe we're kind of lucky that the construction started on the south end, and we have the north end available to us. So, but we'll keep everybody in the loop as we go. But if the weather holds out, and they're able to move ahead, and construction is able to continue and not deemed nonessential, and it isn't, it's deemed essential, then sometime in the summer.
Thank you. And the other questions, I got, I got you two more. The Route 8 project and Crowe Street project, is the COVID-19 going to slow these down, or are we going to go forward?
I don't anticipate them slowing down, but that doesn't mean it won't. It's just that, at this point, the Community Development Department is still working. Just because they're not in this building doesn't mean they're not working. I get weekly reports on what they're, what they're working on. And I just signed a bunch of contracts today for Route 8 with the state, normal construction contracts for traffic control, work that's funded by feds versus what's funded by the state. So we're still moving ahead, but they haven't put the project out for bid yet, and that doesn't mean they won't. But I can't say it's been delayed because of it yet.
And Russell Field?
Russell Field is still on course, still on path as well. I just can't tell you how far along it is or when work will begin. That's a great Donna question, but we can find out for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can comment on the Crowe Street project, as I had asked Donna about that one, and I believe Community Development is working on the second mailing to the neighborhood residents regarding the signed rights of entry forms that they need in hand in order to advance that project. So I think the three of us were in the room for that meeting, and only a handful of the residents were present to sign those forms, so Community Development is working on that, collecting that. So that's where that project stands.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, one other thing I'd like to comment on is, just recently, as of today, a lot of the trade unions are starting to want to shut down their work because of the COVID-19, and it's becoming difficult to assess what is needed to be done and what is being done. And I know the trade unions want to shut down a lot of the jobs because some of their workers have been affected by COVID-19 because of the close proximity they're within each other when they're working. So that's another thing that is fluid at the time.
Rick, do you have any questions for Jay?
Questions, no, but I do have one concern. I'd be a little concerned with pumping the brakes on projects, because what I like to term the speed of government, projects take so many years to get going. So about that, something we can talk about at a future workshop.
Okay. Appreciate the comment. John, anything for Jay?
I'm just, along with what Rick was saying, that we do have many projects, and I agree, a few of them, maybe we should have, you know, thought through a little bit more, but there's many projects that we do have that we, without the funding from the state and federal government, we would not be able to do them. For instance, the Route 8 project, it's well over $7 million, and the federal government and the state is paying for the majority, well, paying for the whole thing. We have to pay for the engineering part of it, but that wouldn't be done without going for those projects. It takes about seven years to get a project like that. Another project is the Rail Trail, continuing to extend it to McCann School. That's coming down the road. I think it's a great project for the county, a great project for the Town of Adams, and we should continue to work on that. Again, it takes years to develop and to happen. And then finally, the Route 8 project towards North Adams, North Adams Line, you know, we're thinking about doing some things there because of the issues we have and the speed that people go on that four-lane highway. So again, that will take another seven years to happen. So I agree, part of the discussion, but if we didn't go for some of these projects, Crowe Street, another one, that the town couldn't afford to do these. So very grateful that the federal government, the state government, the National Planning Committee, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, and our Town Administrator, and the board, we work hard to get these projects, and definitely we wouldn't have them if we didn't fight for them, so. And I have a question, Jay, in regards to stickers for the trash bags. What does one do if they need additional stickers for the trash bags who are up at the recycling center?
John, I'm going to take that one, because our Treasurer, Kelly Rice, had actually asked me to make that announcement this evening. So she has indicated that bag tags for the transfer station can still be purchased, they just need to be purchased via mail or through the drop box out in front of Town Hall. Included in an envelope needs to be a check made payable to the Town of Adams, and in the amount for the stickers. And in the memo, it should have the name of the transfer station sticker that that number is under, and a reminder that five bag tags is $6. So, and if anyone has questions about purchasing bag tags, they can contact the Treasurer Collector between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and the Treasurer Tax Collector's office is extension 110. Did that answer your question, John?
It does, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for asking. Kelly will be very happy that that information got out there. Anything else for Jay? If not, I have one more department update. As we are putting together tonight's agenda, all of the department heads were contacted and asked if there was any information that they needed on the agenda or shared. The other item came from the Council on Aging, and it's with regard to the Mobile Food Bank. So there is another Mobile Food Bank scheduled. It is scheduled for Tuesday, April 14th, so it's back to the regular schedule of the second and fourth Tuesday, and looks like it'll be 10:00 a.m. to noon. So I ask people to look for the Council on Aging's information on Facebook and also on the town's website to make sure if anything should change with the time, location, date, due to weather, or whatever, that information will be posted there. But if anyone has questions about the Mobile Food Bank or about the bagged lunch program that is running through the Council on Aging, I do encourage them to contact the Council on Aging directly at 743-8333. And I think that was it for all of the department head notices. Town Council is not with us this evening, so there's not an update from Town Council. So that brings me to Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. I'll start in the room. Joe?
Nothing.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I met with Lynda Serenek, I can't think of her last name, Serenek, the other day. And we had a teleconference with Kessler Consulting concerning our transfer station and Northern Berkshire Solid Waste District costs. They're doing the bidding with, for us, with the waste company right now. Things weren't really well with that. We expect to have a meeting again, or a teleconference in a couple of weeks, hopefully with the full board. We're looking at some options that cut our costs, and hopefully it's going to work out.
I just have a question for you regarding that. Has the price gone up with Kessler taking over?
It's going to go up, it's going to go up for a ton, that's why we're looking at cutting costs. We're looking at possibly grinding glass instead of sending it out, because glass weighs a lot, so if it goes into our toppers, we're gaining weight. But if we can grind it, it turns into a viable product that we can actually sell. So that's one option we're looking at. And there's other options that we're looking at down the road with it also.
Is there anybody nearby that grades up the glass?
No. We have two options with the grinder. Either we can rent one, go shoot a whole area, we can rent, I forgot how long, and, or we can buy one. Buying one's quite expensive. Renting would be the way to go, because we don't, we could actually store the glass in bins, and once we get enough glass, grind it and store it and sell it.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, anything for Subcommittee and Liaison Reports?
I do not, but I do have a question.
Certainly.
For either Jim, yourself, or Jay. I saw a post today about someone calling from the Council on Aging about tax preparation. Are they cold calling people, or?
The Council on Aging is doing, they do have people that are doing taxes for people. I don't know if COVID-19 has shut that down as of yet, but there are individuals that do do them for our elderly and other people. They might have, somebody might have made an appointment and called them. I forgot they made the appointment, I'm not sure. But they are doing taxes, I can tell you that for sure.
Right. I knew they were doing taxes, I didn't know if they were calling out to people to see if they wanted to come down and have their taxes done.
The only thing I can see is somebody might have made an appointment to have them done, and they didn't show up.
Rick, we can look into that. I do know that the Council on Aging has been making some wellness calls and just checking with our seniors in the community, just touching base, making sure they're doing okay, also just checking to see if they have meals and so forth, and maybe as part of that conversation, they could have talked about tax prep. But since I'm not on that call and not necessarily sure what all of the information was, I think it's something that, Jay, if you could follow up with Erica and just see if there have been any phone calls that have been made, and if it's been like a tax prep cold call. But it's a good concern to have, and I appreciate you raising it, Rick.
Yeah, it's free.
John, do you have any Subcommittee or Liaison Reports?
Tomorrow, we have a Berkshire Regional Planning Commission Executive Committee meeting, and I also have a question, maybe for Jay. Before this all happens, our Town Clerk, Haley, and Council on Aging Director Erica had some outstanding plans for the census, and I think we're going to use the Council on Aging, use the library, and we have a lot of ways to help town people, town citizens to make sure that they are counted, they do their census. Since now, we have this stay-at-home order, and what you, what the governor has instilled on us in regards to town employees, what's the status of helping with the census?
Madam Clerk's going to have to answer that. I've been unable to, I've been unable to really follow through that for obvious reasons. I can tell you that there was one day I was in the Clerk's Office, and Haley was indicating that if anyone has trouble from home, because as you know, it's all web-based, if they call the Clerk's Office, the Clerk's Office was happy to put in the information for the constituent. That's about as much information as I know. I also do know that there was a bunch of public information meetings that were canceled, both by the library and by the Town Clerk, and I had made a recommendation to the Town Clerk that perhaps they would want to film that with Northern Berkshire Community Television and allow that to be rebroadcast periodically as a public service announcement, but I don't know if that was ever followed through.
Haley, are you still on the call?
I have seen some posts on Facebook about the census, make sure you do it and stuff, and not really a lot of guidelines with it, but it is some help and a reminder.
It's very easy, it's a very easy, of what I know about it, it's a very easy process. Frankly, as a municipal official, I'm really hoping and praying that the federal government will delay it by another year, because this is the absolute worst time to have a census.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to just say that Massachusetts is leading all the New England states in returns of census reports so far, but that's here nor there, I guess.
Anything else Subcommittee Liaison? Okay. If not, move on to announcements and go to the orders. Joe?
Once again, I'd like to thank everybody on the front lines of this virus, health workers, everybody that's essential workers are out there doing their best in really tough circumstances. As we've been reading, we're, a lot of these places, hospitals and healthcare facilities are running short on needed protective gear, and I just wish them well. When you see, you know, people just dying at the rate it is, it's something sad, and I just hope that everybody works together and does what they're supposed to, because that's the only way that we can lessen the burden on all those involved and to make this outcome better than it's anticipated right now. So kudos to everyone who's... this outcome better than it's anticipated right now. So kudos to everyone who's on the front lines, and God bless you.
Thanks, Joe. Jim?
Yeah, I just want to say that COVID-19, it's a lot of common sense. Use your head. Stay away from people. Wash your hands. Don't touch your face. Get away from that. Banners for fallen heroes are still going strong. We're still hoping to have them up by, before Memorial Day. And we're still accepting applications. So even though Town Hall is closed, you can call Deb Dunlop at 743-8300, and she'll take your information, and I'll get it. And it'll be added on. And there's the drop box out there for your pictures if need be. That's all I got.
Rick, anything?
Uh, nothing.
John?
Just ahead of what Joe had to say is, I want to thank our Chair, Chairman Hoyt, and Town Administrator Jay Green. This is something that no one could have ever saw coming. What you've had to do and decisions you've had to make as part of this state of emergency have been difficult. And you have worked with other communities and other organizations to ensure our community is as safe as it can be. And so just thank you to, and also thank you to our town employees. They've all had to adjust as much as the leadership has. So I just want to thank everyone locally for what they've done to keep the Town of Adams running.
Thank you, John. One last thing I have is, thanks to the efforts of our federal delegation, Senator Markey and Congressman Neal, and of course, our local delegation, Senator Hines and Representative Barrett, who I know, this is an item that is very close to Rep. Barrett's heart, having worked for him previously, and again, being able to work with him now. And that is that, the letter I have in front of me is giving us notice that effective on March 30th, just a few days ago, that Charter Communications, also known as Spectrum, has finally brought back WWLP, Channel 22, Air Channel 22, to our cable system. That is going to broadcast on Cable Channel 14 and 1204 on basic starter TV and high definition to the channel lineup serving our community. So really, this has been an excellent time for that, in light of the fact that we need Massachusetts local news here in the Berkshires. Yes, we are awfully close to the state of New York, but we are still part of the Commonwealth, and we take our marching orders from Boston. So we need a direct line to information from the other part of the state. So once again, Channel 22, based out of Springfield, Mass., is now broadcasting on Channel 14 and 1204 on our cable system. And I think I speak for myself and all members of our board that we thank Senator Markey and Congressman Neal, Rep. Barrett, Senator Hines, Rep. Tricia Farley-Bouvier, and Rep. Pignatelli down in South County for their efforts to get this installed back on our cable system.
Thank you. I know this is not the ideal way to conduct meetings, and I appreciate everybody's patience while we are trying to figure out the technology and figuring out how we can meet and continue to do work. I apologize that I've been a little distracted, and not necessarily myself this evening. But as many of us will come to find out, sadly enough, we will all be affected by COVID-19 and probably know somebody who contracts it. But just prior to the start of our meeting, I found out that one of my former colleagues and friends had passed away today from the virus. And I, it just has me sitting here thinking, just like making sure that everybody is doing their part to do all of the social distancing that we're asking of you. We, as your municipal leaders, will continue to make sure that we are making decisions to keep you all healthy and safe. But we do need you all to do your part, and I hope you will do that. So with that, I really have nothing else, because I've been doing my best to keep it together for this hour. So I would love somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, re-adjourn.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yeah, sorry, turn the loss.
I appreciate that, Rick.
Yes.
Okay. And that's, yes, for me, that's unanimous, and we are adjourned.